Council members, participants.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Before we begin this council session today, I'm going to make the following announcement. The... Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We're using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice and was published in the Daily News, The Inquirer, The Legal and Intelligencer, and can also be found on PHLcouncil.com. A now note that the hour has come. The clerk will call the roll to take attendance, and members that aren't attended say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom?
Morning, Council President and colleagues, and happy St. Patrick's Day.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning to the city of Philadelphia, the city of brotherly love, St. Patrick's Day, and the city of sisterly affectedness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gim?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, sending out prayers to all the young people impacted by senseless gun violence.
Good morning, Council.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, colleagues, and I have my green represented today.
Good morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues and to the viewing public.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kinon Sanz.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola? Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning to the listening public.
Good morning.
That's President Clark.
And good morning to you all. Thank you all very much, and a quorum is present, so we'll now come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes the Reverend G. Lamar Stewart of Taylor Memorial Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Gauthier. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors, please bow your head with the invocation.
Thank you, Council President. Gracious and heavenly Father, we bless you and we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for this opportunity to be gathered in this moment. God, we're coming today to pray for our city, to pray for young people in our city, to pray for seniors in our city, to pray for the residents of this city that we all love. God, we're praying today because we all face very challenging times, whether it's the pandemic, whether it's poverty, whether it's violence, whether it's gun violence. We need you more now than we've ever needed before. So, God, as those who are part of this city council body gather to begin to discuss policy and programming and that which is in the best interest of our city, I pray, God, that all what we've done with a level of sensitivity to the plights and to that which plague vulnerable communities and marginalized people in this city. And so, God, I pray for wisdom in this hour. I pray for sensitivity in this hour. I pray for courage and conviction in this hour as this governing body thinks through what is best for the people of this city. Be with them. We thank you for their leadership. We thank you for their love. We thank you, God, for their integrity. And we pray these things on behalf of the city of Philadelphia. I pray for every young person who's preparing for the warm weather months. I pray, God, that you continue to keep your arms of protection around them. We're praying for safe streets and safe corridors. We're praying that homes will be safe. We're praying, God, for your love to once again permeate the streets of Philadelphia. And, God, I'm praying this prayer in the name that is significant to me, in the name of Jesus the Christ, and we all say amen.
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 Thank you, Reverend, so much for your invocation, and thank you for your spiritual guidance this morning. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 10, 2022, and the chair recognizes Councilman Scola. Councilman Scola?
On behalf of Councilmen Scola, I move that the Journal of the Meeting Thursday, March 20th, March 10, 2022 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved improperly. Second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 10, 2022 stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for the leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters, resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on a calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved improperly. Second, that the legislative matter stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. And our next order of business is communications, and I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 11, 2022, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on March 10, 2022. Bill number is 210827 and 220414. And I am hereby returning without my signature, bill number 210956A, which was passed by council at its session on March 3, 2022. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the License Agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Market Street East Urban Borough area for a certain pedestrian bridge located between 10th and 11th Streets above Philbert Street, including air rights, and authorize the redevelopment of the First Amendment to the License Agreement Keystone of the property. At the take such action, the First Amendment to the License Agreement. All under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
I don't know. President Clark, is this... Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm just trying to let the fire engine go by.
Oh, sorry. I was trying, I've been trying to get off, something's wrong with my device here.
Okay.
I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you.
Let the record be fair. And let the record be fair. Councilman Scola is here, present. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Mr. Decker. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and by way of a reminder, we're asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment, and I would like to thank you in advance for your anticipated operation. And please ask the clerk, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Parker offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment of Manol, a portion of the model cities of Manol area, identified by us numbers and street addresses as 1604 through 1608 Page Street, 1610 Page Street, 1612 Page Street, and 1614 Page Street.
Next week's calendar?
And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings to examine the enforcement of building and construction code requirements, licenses and inspections, inspector caseload, and inspector staffing ratios, and the city's response to worker misclassification, also known as payroll fraud.
Today's calendar?
Councilwoman Gim offers one bill entitled in ordinance, demanding chapter 211800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Foster Care to add new provisions related to screening and application for benefits for foster youth, limiting the use of social security supplemental security income, veterans, or other various benefits, and providing notice to the foster child for certain actions taken with respect to social security and other benefits.
For the committee?
Councilman Jones offers one resolution entitled the resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office, Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, Philadelphia Sheriff's Office, Office of the City Controller, and then the Managing Director's Office to conduct a joint evaluation of the city's current witness relocation and protection programs.
That was a request for a hearing. Now, Mr. Decker?
It was not, Mr. President.
It's a resume.
It was just a demanding calling resolution.
For this next week's hearing. I want to recognize Councilwoman Gim quickly, and Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Thank you so much, Council President. I just wanted to be recognized briefly on the introduction of the bill. The tragedy of losing a parent or guardian is something no child or young person should ever have to endure. And when those children come into our city's foster care system, we should do everything we can to ensure that they get what is entitled to them and stop at nothing less than what they deserve. Today, the City Council Committee on Children and Youth introduces the Stronger Futures for Foster Youth Act, comprehensive legislation that rights a wrong for foster youth that are, who are entitled to survivors and disability benefits, and will set up individual savings accounts for these youth to ensure that they receive and can save the benefits that are rightly owed to them. Like many of my colleagues, I was deeply upset when reporting by Steve Volk and Resolve Philly revealed that nearly $5 million in federal benefits that are specifically designated to foster youth who are entitled to survivor or disability benefits had been collected and put towards the city's general fund between 2016 and 2020. This was done without notice to the youth or their foster families, and it was poorly accounted for, which meant that the city continued, in some cases, to collect individual benefits even after youth left the foster care system. I want to emphasize, though, that as upsetting as this practice may be, it is permitted. In fact, it's not only permitted, it's actually baked into regulations at the state level and is widespread all across the country. But today, Philadelphia takes up the mantle to right this wrong and to join cities like Los Angeles and New York City, which are now taking steps to prohibit this practice. It is our hope that this municipal action will enact change across the state of Pennsylvania and all around the nation. The Stronger Futures for Foster Youth Act enacts the clearest and strongest legislative protections in the country to ensure and conserve federal benefits actually go to the foster youth they are designated for. The legislation expressly prohibits these funds from being used to cover the routine costs of care because, in fact, we do not require other foster youth to cover the cost of their own care. And under this bill, the city would be required to screen youth for, for, uh, for whether they're eligible for these benefits and assist them in applying for potential benefits. If no guardian, legal guardian can be designated, the city will step in as a legal guardian and will establish individual accounts to hold the funds. Now, to be clear, this money is actually significant. The city collects almost $1 million every single year for several hundred youth. This money can be life-changing. As Marcus Jarvis, who spent years in Philadelphia's foster care system and who now works for the Juvenile Law Center as a tremendous advocate, said, Marcus said, "I could have used that money just to get some stability, to get some kind of college degree. That would have changed everything for me." We know that youth transitioning out of foster care face tremendous challenges, including homelessness, high school and college dropout struggles, mental health issues. An estimated 10% to 20% of these foster children, however, were entitled and eligible for federal benefits, and ensuring that they receive them is essential for their long-term well-being. Ensuring these benefits are preserved for these young people transitioning out of foster care could make a transformative difference in their lives. This is money that can help pay for textbooks at college, for down payment, for a lease, for disability aids that are not covered by insurance. It's crucial to help set up a young person on a trajectory for success. And so, I want to thank the many legal experts and youth advocates who helped ensure that this legislation is as comprehensive as possible, and specifically, just tremendous thanks to Daniel Hatcher, Amy Harfeld, and Sue Mangold. I'm extremely grateful to be introducing this in collaboration with the city's Office of Children and Families, who have been committed partners to working with us and our state to take all the steps needed to end this practice and to put us on a new path. And of course, I want to thank my tremendous co-sponsors on this legislation, the Committee on Children and Youth, council members, Brooks, Gauthier, Thomas, Johnson, as well as council members Bass and Green. Thank you all so much. I look forward to the process that will lead us and show that Philadelphia can truly be a model. And most of all, I want the families who shared their stories, especially Vaughn Jackson and his now adopted children, Savante and Xavier, when to know that this is in their name. We honor you. We thank you for speaking up so courageously, and we are here to fix what should have been fixed a long time ago. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jones, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, um, Mr. President, I wanted to offer clarification why the resolution on witness protection and relocation was not going to be a hearing. It is because, um, in that, uh, frame of work, we'd like to be somewhat confidential and allow the different departments and their various participations in those two processes to, to be free to communicate what some of the problems are. I wanted to further thank, in particular, Councilman O and Councilman Johnson for their, um, various meetings that we've had with stakeholders and individuals that have had to suffer through the relocation process. People are trying to do their best, each of those departments, but what we were able to preliminarily talk about is that sometimes the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, and worse, they don't know how much. So, we want to streamline that and make sure that people out there that witness crimes feel confident that their safety is going to be taken into account and that those services that are due them will be comprehensive. Thank you. Again, Member O and Member Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
Councilman Johnson offers three bills. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance substantially increasing the budget and number of areas and neighborhoods around the city served by the Community Life Improvement Program, CLIP, to improve the health, safety, and cleanliness of every neighborhood and enhance the quality of life for all residents.
For the committee?
On his own behalf, an ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of of a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to 738 South 11th Street, currently the location of a restaurant known as Hawthorne's.
For the committee?
Councilman Johnson also offers an ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to 1631 Packer Avenue, currently the location of a restaurant known as Philodium.
For the committee?
Councilman Green offers a resolution expressing solidarity with the local leaders of Ukraine.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Brooks offers two resolutions entitled the resolution honoring and recognizing the contributions of service worker, administrator, and faith leader Bonnie Carmada, whose leadership and talent for relationship building has bolstered the work of Philadelphia's most instrumental public interest organizations, uplifted Philadelphia's Latino community, and empowered underserved populations across the city.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the voice, vision, and contributions of movement activist and organizer Ellen Sumkawa, whose fearless and transformative leadership within Philadelphia's Asian-American community has advanced major victories for racial and economic justice, built multiracial coalitions across the city, founded historic institutions, and redefined Asian-American activism, particularly in the area of youth leadership, education, justice, and civil rights.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gauthier offers a resolution authorizing the City of Philadelphia Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings to explore the role of the Philadelphia Police Department Neighborhood Services Unit as a part of the city's comprehensive response to the widespread prevalence of abandoned vehicles in the city of Philadelphia and to examine enforcement practices, preventative measures, and potential solutions.
Today's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating Women's History Month's champion of the week, Hyma Depp Charter School Girls Basketball Team, honored its successful 2022 season and winning the Philadelphia Public League title two years in a row.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Scola offers a resolution approving the First Amendment to the License Agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Market Street East Urban renewal area for certain pedestrian bridge located between 10th and 11th Streets above Philbert Street, including air rights.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers five bills and one resolution entitled, an ordinance pending chapter 10700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled refuse and littering by adding new definition for third-party administrators and revising section 10718 to sanction third-party administrators as enforcers of illegal dumping violations. And an ordinance pending title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled miscellaneous by adding a new chapter 213300 entitled flag raising to establish uniform standards for flag-raising ceremonies. And an ordinance pending chapter 12900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled parking regulations and penalties by regulating on-street parking of unpermitted semi-trailers and truck tractors. And an ordinance pending chapter 12400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled towing and immobilizing a parked or abandoned vehicles by adding new regulations for the towing and storage of illegally parked semi-trailer and tractor, tractors. And an ordinance pending chapter 12800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled administrative adjudication of parking violations by establishing monetary penalties for on-street parking of semi-trailers and truck tractors.
Mr. Decker, hold on one second. Councilman O, did you want to speak on one or multiple bills?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the bills. Just for clarification, I understand there can be some confusion around them. I'll start with the flag raising because that's probably somewhat difficult to understand. In my time in council, starting in 2012, the only person who was raising a flag was Councilwoman Maria Kinon Sanchez. And I followed her by doing a flag raising and then another one. And the flag raisings have gotten very popular and eventually, and properly, the administration has set out, you know, their process of flag raisings. And just recently, the administration set out some new rules that only flags that are recognized by the Department of State will be raised. And I'm not sure is that only foreign flags or what does that mean? We do raise, uh, various flags on different occasions, such as Gay Pride Week and, uh, June 19th, and those are not State Department authorized or recognized flags. But this body passed unanimously a resolution a few weeks ago to raise the Freedom Flag of Belarus. Many people never heard of Belarus until the invasion of the Ukraine. And the issues surrounding the Ukraine and the Baltic nations and the threat to their freedom, and then the launching of troops from Belarus has raised in many people's knowledge the fact that the US provides political asylum to anyone who escapes from or leaves Belarus to the US because it's a dictatorship and a human rights violator. When Belarus became a free nation, it adopted a white and red flag. It had an election and a president was elected, but then power was not handed over. And there is a dictatorship, and that is the current recognized flag of Belarus. So, we passed a resolution that on March 25th, we will raise So we passed a resolution that on March 25th, we will raise the Freedom Flag of Belarus as we raise different flags. However, after the resolution passed, there is a new rule, the flag will not be raised. Unfortunately, the event is already set by the, by the community of Belarusian-Americans, Belarusian-Americans, who will be coming and for that occasion, in light of especially what is going on in the Ukraine. So I simply have codified that there is a process for the administration, but when we as a body pass a resolution, that shall take precedence. And I just explained that, like all things, that's up to a vote of this body. So in that light, I'd like to go to the next set of bills because I think it is something that everyone here has been concerned with and, and has tried to solve this problem, and that is the illegal parking of trailers, semi-trailers, tractor-trailers throughout our city. It's been something ever since I got elected that we have been trying to figure out, especially the illegal dumping and the fact that everyone goes, I recognize Councilwoman Jamie Gautier for her hearings and her efforts. I know she is working hard on that issue, and she's actually my district councilperson. I live in her district, and I live on a block that has continuous dumping. It's been identified, you know, as one of the places, I guess, by dumpers where they like to come and dump. And since I can remember, we have patrolled the neighborhood, we have cleaned up the dumping, we have dealt with the tractor-trailers and things like that. And I think it is a difficult problem. So, you know, I have a thought, I have an idea that I have put into a series of bills. And again, any idea that we have ultimately is a discussion in this body and is ultimately passed by everyone in this body. But I will say that where I've come to a conclusion is that the personnel are too few. Our city is pretty much closed at 6 o'clock. We don't have LNI inspectors. We do have police, and they end up being, you know, asked to do so many different things. And even the police that are responsible for dealing with illegal dumping and tractor-trailer are put out to deal with crime. I've come to the conclusion that we cannot ask our citizens at this point in time to confront anyone doing illegal dumping or tractor-trailers because there's too many occasions where people have pulled guns on our citizens. And that's just one of the dangerous things that occur. And I know the police have emphasized citizens do not confront someone who is doing some illegal activity because that has not led to good circumstances. And even our city does not want to get engaged in confrontations. So, so my bill basically codifies one, that no semi-trailers, no tractor-trailers, no large vehicles can be parked in a residential neighbor, neighborhood, just clearly no. And that if they have identification, they will get a $300 ticket. And if they don't pay that ticket, they will be basically immobilized and towed if they don't clear that up by a third party retained by the administration, public or private. Public or private entity will immobilize a vehicle and will tow. If they are without identification, as many of these vehicles are, and let me just say, the trailers that are hauling automobiles, they are left in the street, they have no identification, they are a particular problem, and so this bill basically allows, because they don't have identification, for them to be towed. If they don't have identification, then they are abandoned vehicles. And as far as the dumping is concerned, a third-party administrator will record, and they are authorized, based on a review of the recording, to engage in the process of sending the vehicle that is identified by license tag and, and description of the vehicle in the videotape, a ticket. If they do not pay the ticket, as often they don't, then their vehicle will be immobilized with a boot. And if they do not pay in time, the, the vehicle will be towed. I think we're at a point, Council President, that there is a culture in our city that has been exacerbated by COVID-19, where people just routinely dump in our city, and they come from out of our city, where I live on the edge of Delaware County. You know, they don't dump in Delaware County. They roll into Southwest Philly and, and they dump in our city. And it is to the point where I think it is clearly, in my opinion, contributing to the violence that we see. When people feel that they don't matter, when their communities don't matter, where they have everything at, you know, in fear of everything, and no one is coming to, to treat them like they matter. We have violence, and, and I, I think that rather than taking our police personnel away from doing this job, we should ensure that they can do this job, and we should be supplementing their efforts. However, since I'm not in a position to do that, none of, none of us, none of us are executives, I introduce a bill to allow a third-party entity, public or private, to, to do this. And quite frankly, one of the biggest problems, and I'll end with this, the videotape in these cameras have to be reviewed by somebody. And that's not going to be our police officers. They're out on the street. And somebody is not going to review them unless they're getting paid. And so we're going to have to pay someone, but I think we have to make a clear statement that the culture of dumping and using our residential neighborhoods as business headquarters is going to dramatically stop. And I believe that as soon as people get their wheels locked and their trailers hauled away, they're going to spread the word that this is not something you can do in Philadelphia. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. I'm not supposed to talk, but briefly, thank you, Councilwoman Gautier. Thank you for what we all know, feel, this issue about quality of life, as it relates to conditions in our neighborhoods, is increasingly problematic. It's pretty much up there along with crime and schools in terms of why people make decisions to move out of the city of Philadelphia. Maybe during the course of this budget process, we will talk about why we don't have not hired public safety officers instead of having police do abandoned vehicle tickets when we had this level of crime. Maybe we'll figure out whether or not we can get the administration to support a robust infusion of appropriations for CLIP and not have CLIP only in one part of the city at a time, which is utter, you know, bordering on somewhat ridiculous. They've been up at Kensington for a long, long time, understanding the challenges up there, but there are other parts of the city that need it. So we will have the opportunity to address this in a very meaningful way, and hopefully the administration can get on board with what we're trying to do to enhance the quality of life in these neighborhoods. I'll thank both of you all and thank the rest of you all for being on point on these issues. Mr. Decker, those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman O offers a resolution urging the White House and United States Congress to work with NATO partners in establishing a limited no-fly zone over humanitarian corridors in Ukraine.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, our next order of business is reports on committees. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report on the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee of the whole reports out five resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read your report.
To the president and members of the council, the city of Philadelphia, the committee of the whole, which is referred, Resolution Number 210831, entitled, "The Resolution Approving the Appointment of McCullough Williams III to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board," and Resolution Number 211005, entitled, "A Resolution Reappointing J.S. Felstins, Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lowell Marion," and Resolution Number 211006, entitled, "The Resolution of Reappointing Bernie A. Presenica to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lowell Marion," and Resolution Number 220025, entitled, "The Resolution Appointing Eric Garrett to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District," and Resolution Number 220026, entitled, "The Resolution Appointing Brennan Tomasetti to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District." Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, in terms of attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Resolution Number 210831, 211005, 211006, 220025, and 220026 will be placed on our final passage calendar at an accession of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, read your report.
The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, which is referred, Bill Number 210743, entitled, "An Ordinance Renaming and Designating the Properly, commonly referred to as the 11th and Benango Playground, located at 3600 North 11th Street, as the Williams-Moore Reed Memorial Park in the city of Philadelphia." Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, in terms of attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 210743.
Second?
Thank you. It has been moved to properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this date of Bill Number 210743. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with suspending of the rules have been deemed by a padded first reading. It will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on our, on our second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 220226, 220227, 220228, 220229, 220231, 220233, and 220111. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Our next order of business is public comment. Before we have our public comment, I want to give our technology professionals a brief five minutes to connect our speakers today. We'll take a brief five-minute break. Thank you.
We are now live.
Thank you very much. We're back. Thank you for your patience. We're going to start our public comment session. But now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider public comment and we'll go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at assessment of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up. In order to testify, you must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, which we have today, you will have three minutes to speak. However, this time may vary from time to time based on the volume of individuals wishing to testify. In order to be fair, to all those wishing to speak though, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout the testimony, and when 30 seconds are remaining of your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserved a right to limit the number of speakers with repetitious comments being made on the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for public comment at any particular time. Please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded. So because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I want to thank you so much for your willingness to participate in the public comment session in the city of Philadelphia City Council. Thank you. I would ask, ask Mr. Decker now, please the first name on our list of speakers today.
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Corinne O'Connell, commenting on 210848.
Good morning. Say your name for the record, and please proceed.
Good morning. This is Corinne O'Connell. I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia, and I'm speaking with regards to the six homes proposed for Habitat to build on Page Street. The six homes on Page Street that Habitat Philadelphia wants to build represent so much more than four walls and a dry roof overhead. Six local Philadelphia families. We're talking about 30 people with more than 15 children who will own the home that they live in, creating stability for those families and helping to build generational wealth. We are the only local developer that is building ownership units for families earning between 30 and 80% of the median income. The majority of Habitat homeowners are Black and Brown families and shoulder the brunt of of the effects of redlining and other structural racism. So working alongside these families has a direct impact on building generational wealth, closing the racial wealth gap. The city's own comprehensive development plan, Philly Twenty Thirty-Five for Lower Morris Philly, created an extensive public and community engagement. It outlines the following priorities and recommendations. Fortify residential blocks where homeownership is dominant by selling government-owned land for indoor development. Furthermore, it outlines implementing transit-first policies in the neighborhood. Our team has been ready and remains ready to build six beautiful new energy-efficient homes that will be sold to first-time Philadelphia homeowners. If, if the last two years since COVID have taught us anything, it is that home is foundational. Home is health, home is education, home is opportunity. Our vision is a city where everyone has a decent place to live. And my hope that our next step towards that vision is to bring Page Street to life. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Tanija Hammond, commenting on two-one-oh-eight-four-eight.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Tanaja Hammond. Um, I am currently involved in Habitat for Humanity to become a homeowner. Um, I just wanted to express my need for.
Ms. Hammond, you still with us?
It looks like she, uh, disconnected.
All right, let's see. See if we can get her back. Um, go, go to the next speaker, Mr. Decker, and we'll try to reconnect Ms. Hammond.
The next speaker is Tyrica.
Are you back? Okay, all right.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I don't know where I got disconnected. Again, hello, guys. My name is Tanaja Hammond. I'm currently involved in Habitat for Humanity to become a homeowner. I wanted to express, um, what I feel, in my opinion, the need of home ownership for, um, affordable home ownership for people like myself, which is a mother of five, a single mother of eight. I have, um, grown children. I've been a mother since I was fifteen. Currently, I live in low-income housing that is closing, the University City Town Home. Um, and I'm trying to express my need to become a home ownership because several times my livelihood has been jeopardized, um, over kids having arguments. So it's like a detrimental need to become a homeowner, something that I can call my own, that my children can call their own and never ever have to have anyone jeopardize our livelihood. Um, I'm all for the Page Street. I understand that some of the residents may be a little leery with, you know, their parking and things like that. But to me, it's a bigger need for homes than parking spaces. And I feel we can work together to figure something else out. Um, but it's just important for us to have a home, especially dealing with everything going on through the pandemic, especially affordable housing. And if you guys could just take the genuine expression from me that this is detrimental. Like I said, I'm a single mother of five. I work every day. I have a college student. It's really, really hard out here. And Habitat has created an opportunity for people like me to be able to have home ownership, um, dealing with poverty. Um, so the program is an awesome program and I just hope you guys consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Tyrica Richards, commenting on two-one-oh-eight-four-eight.
Good morning. State your name.
Great morning, everyone. My name is Tyrica Richards. I am a future homeowner in the Habitat for Humanity program. I want to first thank you and I want to thank everyone for your time. I am calling to voice my support for the bill pertaining to the building of the six homes on Page Street. I am a single mother of two. I have been in the Habitat for Humanity program since November of twenty nineteen, which consisted of completing three hundred and fifty sweat equity hours, many workshops, and savings of escrow. Habitat for Humanity has and still does provide me with the opportunity to become not just a homeowner, but a successful homeowner at an affordable rate for myself and family. And we are forever grateful for this opportunity. Homeownership means a lot to myself and children. It's not just the roof over our head, but a place to call home and provide lots of love to not only my children, but generations to come. I work in the field of child welfare for the city of Philadelphia, providing social services to help ensure children and families are safe. And as we all know, this job is not an easy task. But I do it because of my passion to help others. Now I'm asking for assistance, that I, for the assistance that I provide in return. And that is a warm, safe place to call home for my family. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lorena Marshall Blake, commenting on two-two-oh-two-two-seven.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake, and I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Independence Blue Cross Foundation. Good morning, Council President Clark and all members of Philadelphia City Council. And I'm also vice president of Community Affairs for Independence Blue Cross. I am elated and delighted to support the passage of resolution two-two-zero-two-two-seven, which honors and congratulates the tenth anniversary of the Independence Blue Cross Foundation. A special thank you to the prime sponsors of the resolution and dear friends, Councilmember Sherrell Parker and Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson. And I thank you to all co-sponsors of this resolution. I am grateful for the important work that you do for our city every day. In a few days, we will celebrate the Independence Blue Cross Foundation's decade of growth. In two thousand and eleven, the foundation was founded with one mission and one mission only, to lead sustainable solutions to improve the health and well-being of the communities in which we live, work, and serve. Our work goes beyond grant-making. It is informed by our most important stakeholder, our community. By the end of two thousand and twenty-two, the foundation will have awarded nearly seventy million dollars in charitable grants and to research, enabling the region's nonprofits to address health disparities, improve access to care in underserved communities, and yes, serve our neighbors in need. And know what? We are not finished yet. We are proud of the foundation's intentional impact in its first decade. And we look forward to all that we will accomplish together in our future. Again, I thank you for this opportunity and for this very, very special recognition.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Leila Erby, commenting on two-two-oh-two-two-eight.
Good morning.
Hello. Hello. Good morning. My name is Leila Erby. I'm representing, um, Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania this morning in relation to the resolution honoring our one hundred and fifteenth anniversary. I'm calling just with some personal remarks, um, or speaking on some personal remarks on my connection to Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania. I've been with, um, Girl Scouts since I was about seven and have now been lucky enough to be the program specialist for the Girl Scouts Beyond Bars program that we have that is specific to very few councils throughout the nation. And that is where we connect incarcerated mothers with their daughters, giving them the opportunity to the Girl Scout leadership experience while also keeping them connected to their mothers. So this is a personal, um, promotion of Girl Scouts and just in support of the resolution, um, coming to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment. And we will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of resolution number two-two-zero-two-two-six?
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fee simple title to fourteen oh-three, fourteen oh-nine, fourteen twelve, fourteen fifteen, fourteen sixteen, fourteen twenty-one, fourteen thirty, thirty-five, and fourteen forty-one North Seventeenth Street and fourteen sixteen twenty-four Jefferson Street in the Fifth Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two-two-zero-two-twenty-seven.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the Independence Blue Cross Foundation on the occasion of its tenth anniversary.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two-two-zero-two-twenty-eight.
A resolution celebrating and congratulating Girl Scouts of the U S A on the occasion of its one hundred and tenth anniversary and thanking Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania for its service to the girls of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes, I guess, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two-two-zero-two-twenty-nine.
A resolution honoring and celebrating the remarkable accomplishments of inspiring women leaders. Benazir Veto, Sarah Boone, Brigadier General Hazel Johnson Brown, Meda Al-Christi, Admiral Michelle Howard May Jemison, Catherine Johnson, Condoleezza Rice, Lynda Thomas Greenfield, and Madam C J Walker in honor of Women's History Month.
Chair recognizes Councilman Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. And on behalf of all enlightened male members of council, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two-two-zero-two-thirty-one.
A resolution honoring M B C ten Philadelphia's Glenn Hurricane Schwartz on the occasion of his upcoming retirement and recognizing his twenty-seven years with the First Alert Weather Team and his forty-two-year career on television reporting the weather.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two-two-zero-two-thirty-three.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Women's History Month's Champion of the Week Kate Scott on becoming the second female full-time broadcaster in N B A history and female play-by-play announcer in Philadelphia sports history.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two-two-zero-one-one-one.
An ordinance amending section nine-two-fifteen of the Philadelphia Code and title streeteries to revise and add additional permitted locations.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dem.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are fifteen.
Council President, I would like to report a voting aye. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ayes are sixteen, nays are zero, majority of members present voting in affirmative to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
I do, Mr. President. A resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings to examine the enforcement of Building and Construction Code requirements, licenses and inspections inspector caseload and inspector staffing ratios, and the city's response to worker misclassification, also known as payroll fraud, introduced today by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City of Philadelphia Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings to explore the role of Philadelphia, of the Philadelphia Police Department Neighborhood Services Unit as part of the city's comprehensive response to the widespread prevalence of abandoned vehicles in the city of Philadelphia and to examine enforcement practices, preventative measures, and potential solutions, introduced today by Councilwoman Gauthier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I call for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That completes our calendar for today. And prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I would note for the record, at the time, we will use the chat feature available on Microsoft Teams to allow members to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? I'm seeing any speeches on behalf of the majority?
Mr. President.
Yes. Councilwoman Bass?
Yes. Can I be recognized?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to bring something to everyone's attention this morning, um, that I'm sure we're already very much aware of, and that is the upcoming opioid settlement, uh, that should be coming to the city of Philadelphia very soon. Uh, our city is expected to receive a hundred and eighty-six million dollars from the Johnson and Johnson lawsuit, with more money coming from the recently announced Purdue Pharma decision as well. Although the funding is spread over nine years, the initial distribution from the a hundred and eighty-six million dollars will be sometime this year. What is Philadelphia's plan or vision for how we will be utilizing these dollars? Where will we make these investments and will it be an open and transparent process? And are we engaging stakeholders in this process? The city's leadership needs to come together to figure out how we will use this investment. Um, as we all know, we have a very significant opioid situation in the city of Philadelphia, and it needs to be addressed. Our city's leaders need to strategize and develop an equitable and fair process to determine where and when and what dollars will be invested where, specifically evidence-based programs and initiatives. This funding is a unique opportunity to support prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery, and cannot replace the existing funding streams. Our communities deserve transparency and accountability for, from the administration. And my office looks forward to working with our state partners, including State Senator Sharif Streay and our Health Commissioner Shuro Bettengol and other administration officials to ensure that there is no waste of these much-needed resources. Through this work, it is my insistence that the, that the administration will include public input into any outcome. And we look forward to working with all of the relevant parties to ensure that folks have a stake, uh, who have a stake in this matter, have a seat at the table. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Absolutely.
Uh, does not appear that there are any additional speakers on behalf of the majority. That being said, the Chair now recognizes Councilman Joe for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two at ten A M.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two at ten A M. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilman Clark, real quick, Councilman Scola here. Right before you end, I just wanted to remind everybody, two o'clock briefing, Office of Information and Technology, uh, Office of Information and Technology, on a Teams meeting, so everybody try to get on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for that note. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Again, be safe. Thank you. You guys later.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Thank you.